I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need help here, we have a lot that we're on tonight. Mount Hope High School's DECA chapter competed at the 2016 Rhode Island Career Development Conference at Johnson and Wales University. Twenty-nine students placed first, second, or third in their competitive events. Additionally, the first and second place winners went on to compete at the International Career Development Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, where four students received Excellence Awards. Congratulations to the following students: Julia Hill, first place. Carly Roachford, first place. Bryn McKenna, first place. Jade Ramus, first place. Sophie Silbera, first place. Morgan Kane, first place. Okay. Emma Kamara, first place. Madison Withers, first place. Stephen Serps, first place. Jack Serps, first place. Devon Centier, first place in International Conference Excellence Award. Devon Cent-- whoops, sorry. Eric Muscala, first place in International Conference Excellence Award. And one close to my heart. Chris Lynch, first place, International Conference Excellence Award. And Chris was chosen as one of the two Rhode Island voting delegates at the 2016 International Career Development Conference. He had arranged interviews with each candidate running for DECA National President and Regional Vice President candidates. I got caught up in the moment. Tegan Jones, second place. Adam Goslin, second place. Julia Souza, second place. Kalen McKenna, second place. Sophia Dismaris, second place. Sarah Godfrey, second place. Monica Pecalo Evans, second place. Samantha Golden, second place. Catherine Golden, second place. Sarah Barbosa, second place. Catherine McGee, second place and International Conference Excellence Award. Arianna Devere, third place. Zachary Burke, third place. Max Muscala, third place. Savannah Theodore, third place. Nick Simeone, overall competency. Melissa Soto-Villasenor, overall competency. And Kyle Nickchane, overall competency. We want to give a special thank you to Maureen Bothier, who is the advisor of the Mount Hope High School DECA chapter, and Jen Copeland for her valuable assistance in preparing students for their competitions as well as being their chaperones for their trip to Nashville. Congratulations, everybody. The Kikamewitt Middle School Peer Mentoring Program has been in existence for nine years. Students serve in varying capacities within the classroom, working directly with the students under the supervision of the classroom teacher. This program promotes leadership skills and increased self-esteem through direct community involvement. It is part of a collaborative effort to involve KMS mentors and high school peers-- sorry, Hukol School peers-- in making a positive contribution to their schools. Most students in this program maintain honor roll status. It is a win-win for all involved. We want to thank all of you for your service. Mrs. Pecelli, I think you're here, if you want to come up and say a few words. And also, in the meantime, can we have all of our administrators from Hukol and from the middle school give us a, so we all know you're here, their instrument in supporting all of the students in this faculty?
Good evening, I'm Mrs. Pecelli from Hukol School. I teach fourth grade, and just about every year I've had peer mentors. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Vermesitas and all the children for their help. The roles that the children typically play in my classroom are to be a one-to-one helper with a student who might have a challenging task. They also might help a student who needs help organizing their materials at the end of the day to make sure they bring their homework home with their lunchbox. They also participate in small group practice activities, like math packs or other activities they might need to practice. And another thing the children do to help is to help set up desks and chairs for special activities or just cleaning up at the end of the day. The children are also helpful when I have a student who might be very active and needs to take a physical break, so take a walk around the block and back, and make sure they get back to the classroom, that's always good. They are role models for behaviors expected at the middle school. They will often, over having our end-of-the-day class meeting, speak to the children about what will be expected at the middle school compared to how the children may or may not be acting at that time. So they give them a little advice about expectations. Let's see, and then the last thing is to help with-- if we're having a class meeting or a class government meeting, they might help take notes or tally surveys on the board. So overall, very helpful, they usually come consistently, and I really appreciate all of their help. Thank you, kids.
Marissa Estrado-Joe. Hannah Boy. Deonte Calhoun. Aleah Carrion. Leah Chen. Nathan Chen. Carlina Pyers. Jasmine Dubritto. Carla Pyers. Miles Swimmin. Viola Overt. Faith Forman. Leah Ferturro. Katie Hughes. Caitlin Janis. Jonathan Jones. Madison Kazakowicz. Rowandy Leon. Lauren McDonald. Caitlin Moreno. Matthew Tucero. Nathan Moniz. Sophia Moore. Ori Barbosa. Amelia Olivera. Sarah Olivera. Sean Palumbo. Pamela Peters. Catherine Souza. Emily Souza. Cassidy Stallings. Abigail Taylor. Madison Vaveros. Michael Vaveros. Ethan Parker-Weldon. Margaret Williams. Abigail Groth. And Ayesha Tasawar.
That's a hot picture. So you guys, attend your soccer plays and come back and make two rows.
There we go.
They understood it.
They got it.
Hey Maureen, did you figure out how to get on?
Yes.
You should have got this together.
Yes.
All right.
All right, let's get on the radio. Kathy, do we have any other questions? All right, I'm going to strike Executive Session regarding personnel recommendations. So we're going to go straight into our business. Can I have a-- before I accept a motion for consent gender approval, I'm going to strike D six for personnel, strike D six. And the following two will be voted on separately, that would be G four and G fourteen. And that would be part of the consent of gender. Can I have a motion to accept consent gender?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McBride, seconded by Mrs. Lynch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so let's go to--
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the Executive Session minutes of April twenty-fifth and May ninth. Seal. That we seal the Executive Session minutes on both days.
All right, so I have a motion to accept equal and may meetings along with sealing the Executive Session minutes by Mrs. McBride, seconded by Mrs. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to personnel to items. We'll start with G four, now a motion to accept G four.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Lynch, seconded by--
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Wainwright. All right, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And there one, okay. All right, moving on to G fourteen, can I have a motion to accept G fourteen?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Odell, seconded by-- Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Wainwright. Discussion, any comments regarding G fourteen? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One day. Motion passes. All right, we're going to our first recommendation. Do you have Sandy Matt? Can Steve demonstrate on you if I can pronounce that correctly?
Sure.
Thank you both for being here. What I'll do is I'll open up to you to say any words that you may have, and then we'll go into a motion for the recommendation. So please, just hit that button here, it'll go.
It's more high-tech than the last time I was here. I see some familiar faces and some new faces. I have been your bond counsel since the inception, have issued bonds over the course of the construction of the various schools in the last ten or fifteen years. Tonight, we're before you not for new money bond issue, but because some of the previous bonds that you've issued, particularly three series, are what we call in the money. And what we mean by that is the new interest rates today are lower than the interest rates on the bonds that were issued earlier. And as a result, we can issue what we call refunding bonds, and the money comes in for the refunding bonds, and we pay off the old bonds. Interestingly enough, when I first started to do your bond work, under your legislation, you can borrow, and you did borrow in the marketplace on your own rating. Somewhere in the course of ten years after we started doing that, the laws changed, and in order for you to get reimbursement for state aid, the state was really requiring this district, along with the other schools, to borrow on a pool basis. So the concept is the same, that we're issuing refunding bonds to pay off earlier bonds, and there's savings to the district. But what's different this time is that you're in a pool with other school districts that also issue bonds and also have savings as a result of those bonds. So what you have is Rhode Island Health and Educational Building Corporation, which is a state agency that issues bonds, will go out into the marketplace, and they will produce something called an official statement. And I know some of you who are on the table remember the official statements we worked on for the district. As a result of that public offering, underwriters will bid on the bonds. The money will come in, not just for your bonds, but for all the bonds. So why do they do that? Well, part is the law, you have to do it. But the theory behind it is the cost of issuance is less. So the underwriters take down the fee, the underwriters' council fee, the bond council fees to actually issue the refunding bonds are less as a result of pooling this of all the other communities. My role in this is to represent you in connection with the disclosure that's made in the official statement by the district, to make sure that your votes comply with your statute, to make sure that you adhere to all the rules that are applicable to the district as part of that bond issue that rolls up to the Rybeck bond issue. The vote tonight will authorize the issuance of three series of bonds. My colleague Steve Maseroni will go through the more technical, probably more fun, part of the presentation, which is how much you'll actually save. But I have to mention two things. Number one is that whenever we talk about refundings, there's usually a certain amount of savings that we would require before we would refund a particular bond issue. It's about three percent. Right now, as Steve will go through, it's significantly higher than that. But if in the course of this program, we find that one of the series is not in the money, so to speak, then we might pull that series from the refunding. So we would only refund those bonds when they would show a savings for the district. So when you're voting tonight, you're voting for all three, subject to the fact that they meet the net present value calculation and the savings. So I'll let Steve walk through the terms of the bonds and the savings, and then we'll go give it, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sandy. Good evening. I did a brief PowerPoint presentation, which I handed out. And if you turn to page two, I think this pretty much tells the story. As Sandy pointed out, when you issued your bonds, oh six, seven, and eight, interest rates were in the five percent range. Refinancing that today, they're closer to the two percent range. I think a lot of experts would argue that we're probably still at historical lows for tax-exempt bonds, as well as any traffic bonds as well. If you turn to page two, oh, page three, I'm sorry. As I said, the oh sixes, seven, and eights were between four and five percent. Current rates are approximately two point one nine percent. The projected savings, which is subject to market change, is one point five million or ten point nine percent. GFOS standards for refinancing is three percent P B savings, who well exceed that. We look at something else. We also look at the efficiency of the escrow. Generally, we like to see sixty-five to seventy percent escrow efficiency, yet well above eighty percent escrow efficiency. So it certainly meets the parameters to recommend refinancing. If you look at the next bullet, you do share the savings with the state. The state pays approximately fifty-eight percent of your debt service, so they'll pick up fifty-eight percent of the savings. The net benefit over the remaining life of the bonds to the district is approximately seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, again, based on current market conditions. If you turn to the next page, four, typically what happens, you issue twenty-year bonds, they have a ten-year call provision. So what we do is we would call only the callable bonds. So the oh six bonds, we would call seventeen through twenty-six. In most segments, it's eighteen through twenty-seven. In the oh eight bonds, it's nineteen through twenty-nine. So it's the most efficient way to refinance bonds. And also, what's important, unlike when you refinance your mortgage, you may have a thirty-year mortgage, two years in, you can get a lower rate, you go out and get another thirty-year mortgage. With, IRS doesn't permit you to extend the maturity, only under certain circumstances. So we will remain in the original maturities of these bonds. We're not extending out the maturities of these bonds. The projected savings are net of all these expenses. And the bond, as Sandy pointed out, will be a pool transaction. When you issue these bonds, oh six, seven, and eight, you are part of a pool, so it's no different than your bonds, you're part of a bigger pool. Right now, there's about seven or eight municipalities and school districts that will be pulled up if approved and you want to move forward. The bond issue itself, your piece is about fourteen or fifteen million. It's likely to be about a hundred million dollars. And what that does is it lowers, as Sandy pointed out, the cost of issuance to do it. And it also gives investors more interest in a larger bond, as opposed to a small bond. And just the last page, Rybeck, again, approved today. We would go to Rybeck for final preliminary approval on June ninth. And we will mail the offering document, as Sandy pointed out, on the twentieth. And we will price the blocking rates on the twenty-eighth, and close on the twenty-first. So that's the plan. Just as far as my role, I actually work for a company called Public Financial Management, and I am financial advisor to Rybeck. So Rybeck, I've worked for Rybeck, and he provides my services to you to-- So Rybeck, I've worked for Rybeck and he provides my services to you to go through this whole process. And I've worked on your original bonds back in 'oh six, seven, and eight' as well. So if you have any questions?
Mrs. Wainwright?
So we're looking at...
Can you turn yours off?
Steve, can you turn yours off?
Oh, sorry.
So we're looking at issuing the bonds on June twenty-eighth, so we've got some weeks there. Is there any chance, or what do you predict will happen within these weeks prior to us being issued the bonds? Do you think it's going to go down? Do you think it's, chances are it's going to stabilize? If you were a betting man, is there a chance it might go up? What are you thinking?
Can I turn yours off?
That's a difficult question to answer. So, we try to be conservative in our projections. So there is some room if the market does move up or down. You know, I know the Fed, originally, folks didn't think the Fed would move rates in June, and I think there's more of a likelihood, I don't think it's going to happen, but there's more of a likelihood. When the Fed moved rates back in November, we saw the yield curve flatten, we saw the short end of the curve come up and the long end actually stayed the same and came down. So, no prediction. It's a busy season, there's a lot of stuff being issued in Rhode Island, there's a lot of volume, but for the first quarter of this year, volume was down. So there's still a lot of pent-up demand for tax exempt bonds. I know a lot of the money fronts are still looking, the outflows are more than the inflows. So there is still some significant demand. But, you know, the market's been extremely volatile. Even if you look at the first slide, this doesn't look like it's volatile, but that's actually pretty volatile. We've seen swings of seven or eight basis points in one day. So right now, it looks good. And again, I think someone had showed me a statistic last week that we hit the historic lows back last year, I think it was the end of last year, and then compared to where they are today, and we're pretty close to where they were back last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Saviano?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, do the other school districts in that pool have comparable bond ratings to us?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, they do. So what, Moody's, these will be rated by Moody's. And what they do is take a, they take a weak link approach, but it's three notches. So if someone is three notches below you, they could actually get a benefit from your stronger rating. Right now, the folks that are in the pool, Tippudens in there, Foster Bosser Regional School District, Hedges West Greenwich Regional School District, Tom Conlon, Tom North Smithfield, and some of those have stronger credits. For example, North Smithfield's a double A two, you are a double A three. So we've projected that this will be in the double A three category. And so they, no one will bring you down. You may bring a couple up and maybe some folks ahead of you that'll bring it up some of those weaker, but we're projecting a double A three for the pool. What we would do, and we did this, actually in November, we did a similar transaction in November, and there was one weak link. So what we did is we carved them out as a standalone transaction. They had their own rating, they still got the benefit of going in with everyone because it was offered at the same time. They had an eight-one rating, everybody else had a double A-two rating. So we would manage that as well. We wouldn't certainly bring it down to a lower level.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. O'Dell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page three, I'm not understanding the relationship between bullet number three and bullet number four.
So, how the savings are generated is simply by lower debt, future debt service. So if you have a debt service schedule and you pay five hundred thousand each year, we do a refinancing, now you pay four hundred thousand each year. So you save a hundred thousand, but the state's reimbursing you fifty-eight percent. So they pick up fifty-eight percent of the savings and you pick up forty-two percent of those savings. So when you, when you look at the numbers, the savings are approximately a million five, your savings will be the percentage of forty-two percent. And this is on a PV basis. Actually, budgetary savings are a little bit higher, so you'll see that your budgetary savings is seven thirteen. On a PV basis, that's probably slightly lower than that.
Okay, so our savings is right around $713,000 over the remaining life of the bonds. And how much is going to cost us to get that savings?
Yeah, the projections are all net of all fees and expenses. So that's your net, so it's not, you don't pay fifty thousand in fees and then you net out six fifty, so that's seven thirteen, fact is in your fees and expenses.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Sandy. Steve, thank you so much for coming out. And I just gave us this quick presentation and answered any questions that we have. I'll ask my secretary to do now, let's go ahead and make the motion.
Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Budget Facility Subcommittee, approve bond refinance.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. Campbell. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Do you support this calling?
Absolutely.
That's it. Alright. In calling, we trust, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hi, Sav, thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next recommendation.
Recommendation S dash twenty sixteen, sorry. S. My allergies always. I'm having trouble here. Sorry. Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash twenty-eight, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Budget Facility Subcommittee, approve the transfer of $125,000 from purchase service to equipment.
Alright, motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. McBride. Discussion. Mrs. Wainwright?
What is the equipment we're buying?
Doctor Andrew, you have the, you want to lay down for me?
A lot of it's just, yeah, no, it's a lot of the updating of the computers, quite honestly. So it's, next year, we're looking at, whether it's Chromebooks, or replacing Eno boards, so it's just moving those lights to support KMS initiatives, but that's a quick one.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hi, Sav.
Recommendation. Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash twenty-nine, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Budget Facility Subcommittee, assign $180,000 from capital projects for the wireless classroom initiative project.
Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. Campbell. Discussion.
I was going to ask Polly to explain.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yep, please go ahead.
Sure. So, the first part, the wireless classroom initiative, which is sponsored by Ry, Phase One, put all the hotspots in all educational areas. Phase Two, with our new IT director, is fast-tracking to get into all, not just classrooms, but all the areas. In working with our new IT director, we found that there were some things that were in scope versus out of scope, so this will take care of, this hundred and eighty thousand will take care of those things that are out of scope, getting the network right up to where it should be, hopefully in the next five years at least, five or ten years. Oh, I'm sorry. So we'll be getting about three hundred thousand from, well, the first phase was three hundred and ten thousand, Phase Two, from the state, in addition, from the WCI and E-Rate will be another two hundred and eighty thousand. So the hundred and eighty makes the complete project at the end.
Okay, any other comments and discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yep, please.
What grade level are we talking about, school-wide? Because, uh, you're doing the wireless in the district.
It's every school, it's district-wide, every classroom. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hi, Sav. Thank you.
Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash thirty, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Policy and Curriculum Subcommittee, approve the first reading of the information technology equipment policy.
Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. Odell. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hi, Sav. Next recommendation.
Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash thirty-two, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the request of one family to homeschool their children for the twenty fifteen dash twenty sixteen school year, adhering to all requirements as set forth by the Bristol Moore Regional School Committee.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Saviano, this is not the last motion, but we'll go back to six. Can I have a second?
Oops, sorry.
That's okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Campbell.
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Me too.
The school year is over in two weeks. Explain, please.
So, so this is twofold. This is a family, we've been chasing some documentation for the last few months, to say the least. So, that and a situation at the elementary, so this, this setup mitigating circumstances in paperwork, but this has been an ongoing situation since November, December.
Have you been homeschooling this whole time?
Essentially.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Yep, one day.
Sorry, I got to go back. Recommendation S twenty sixteen dash thirty-one, that the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent and supported by the Policy and Curriculum Subcommittee, approve the BWRSD transportation registration form.
Motion made by Mrs. Saviano, seconded by Mrs. McBride. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mrs. Wainwright, please.
First, before my question, I was shocked to see the bus ridership. Talk about wasting money. Oh my goodness gracious, this is, this is so sad. And that money that we've used on transportation, which has not been used, we could have used it someplace else. So I really hope that parents, if we in fact do pass this policy, take advantage of this, think about what this means in terms of dollars it sends to the district. This is, this is ridiculous. My question is, so are we, are we, is there a contract that we have to maintain or we can renegotiate once we're able to look at some of these buses? Because my, I've played with these numbers. And so right now, we have a total of forty-seven buses. If that's correct, I added all those up. It's not correct? I added up the number of buses that we have out currently?
More buses, maybe, bus groups.
It's the number of buses in that column.
Go ahead.
Buses, there are multiple groups, I imagine.
Okay, we run a four-tier system, so what you're seeing there is the number of runs by school. On one bus, most buses are used for three runs. Everybody, a day. Everybody gets a run to the high school, everybody gets a run to the middle school, but the elementaries obviously would be, those buses just reused. We currently run twenty-one buses per day. We're hoping to reduce that, not only from an economical standpoint, which absolutely makes sense, but from, you know, quality of life in Bristol and Moore. And let's face it, there's two main roads in and out. And if we could have five less buses running around town, that certainly will have a positive impact on everyone's quality of life. Good point. So, when I looked at the number of seats per bus and the number of riding average in each of those schools, I came up with like a twenty-three. So, are we just looking at cutting five buses and are we able to do that with our contract with the bus company? Okay, so our morning ridership is around fifty-one percent, our afternoon ridership is around sixty percent. So that's number one. Number two, we've been meeting with the bus company and we continue to meet with the bus company. But even, even if we're not able to, our target is five. We told them outright, we need to take five buses off the road. That's our target. If we're not able to do that, some of the buses will be used for less time during the day, so clearly their, their expenses will go down. So instead of the buses being, you know, a three or four-hour run, they might only be a two-hour run if they're only servicing half of our schools, that amount would go down. Yeah, it's contracted for the number of runs. That's negotiable each year? So what do you think, if we were to reduce five buses, Polly, and I'm not going to hold it to you, what do you think our possible projected savings could amount to?
So, with Mr. Saviano, it's roughly about a half million dollars.
I'd like to pile on this a little bit, just because I've been asked a couple of times on a couple of issues. When we used to look at schools like Rockwell, in which there's a lot of traffic areas, and a lot of parents have shown concern over it, I mean, one of the solutions is to get parents to really let their kids get on the bus. So this is another incentive for them, not so much we try to strip away the bus, but also we'll get the possibility of just expanding participation on the bus. Same thing with KMS, so. Any other comments regarding this? Go ahead, Mr. McBride.
Well, our target is KMS and above, because all of the bus routes run through KMS, but for those people in the audience who are watching, nobody will be without a bus. If you need a bus, if you need a seat on a bus, you will get a seat on the appropriate bus. So please, don't be concerned about that. If you opt out and you have an emergency, then you can opt right back in. So, nobody will be denied service throughout the year, so please don't think that if you say, "No, I'm not going to use the bus," that that means you cannot use it for the entire year. That would be an incorrect statement. If you said, "No, I am not going to use the bus," and then in November or December, you discover that you needed to use the bus, then all you would have to do is notify us and you would be able to use the bus, no questions asked. Just for people who are afraid that once they say no, it means no forever, it does not.
And I would also add to that, it's not so much an update or opt-out, it's just registering. So, by parents registering, I mean, the expectation, there are times when you're going to have to pick up a student, but for the most part, if you register your child, the expectation is the child's utilizing the bus most of the time. Okay, any other?
Yes.
Question from the audience?
Are the buses full to capacity for each ride?
No, that's a part of the problem.
So you're trying to...
The question was, is, is the capacity of buses full? Maybe there runs, and the answer is no. This is why we've been looking at this, really, for several months.
Trying to decrease the number of students taking the bus?
Linda, if you, if you don't mind, could you just go up to the podium, please?
I have a very small voice.
That's okay. Two questions. And simply, stay in here. Thank you.
I have a question, too. I'm just curious if, so if the buses aren't full to capacity, what are we trying to do? We're trying to decrease the number of buses and decrease the number of runs, say, mine for a, so if we decrease it by five buses, that'll save the district a half a million dollars, which could then be used for things that we need, saving us the budget costs so much. So how do we get across to the parents? That's the big thing.
Yep, so, so good point, and has to start here as far as us accepting policy. If you would just, your, your, thank you. But what I, what I will do, I don't know, Dr. Andrew, if you want to take the question now, just simply as far as how we're going to get the message out more, more to the parents in the future, if this, if we pass this.
So that's where we'll start our marketing campaign this week, so we want to make sure this will be, and have any questions, and making sure that... this will be, and have any questions, and making sure that the registration form was approved this evening, but it is about getting the message out there, it's not, I think, Mrs. McBride, points should be re-emphasized, it's not to deny anybody transportation if they're eligible, we just want an act of common. So again, it's just, that's the real message going out there, is that we do have buses that are driving around town less than full, we want accurate numbers, and then hopefully we can achieve some savings. Again, I think the big message, as Mrs. McBride said, is, is not to deny anybody transportation if they're eligible, it's just really accurate accounting.
I think that's, that's really an important point, because we could save that much money for in the other services. You have a huge PR program to go out to the parents, it's not, it's not going to cut your services if you need the bus, but we don't need somebody else that we can save money to use elsewhere.
That's exactly right, and of course, the school district has set up over a million dollars of its future budgets, so this is all part of, that's also a part of the game. But I would also state that this registering for buses is not, you know, an uncommon phenomenon, phenomenon, it does happen, even the state of Massachusetts, it's elsewhere. So all we're trying to do is just make sure that we're all fiduciary, responsible, and you know, really put it back on the parents to, to really make a commitment, you know, if they indeed want their children on the bus. We will not, obviously, prevent any students from getting on the bus, we're just looking for more of a commitment, and in the long run, we're trying to save more money. Okay, any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. I'm reading over the letter, and, and I know that it's, that we're looking at today, and it does say that your decision is not binding, if you decide at a later date, you should contact this person. If anybody's like me, this letter won't be received at, at some point, and it will go in a pile, and then in December, when I, you know, something happens, and I need to use the bus, and I didn't, and they have to call, I'm gonna lose this letter. So either, there should be another line in there, or I'm recommending that there be another line in there, that says this information is also available on our website, or this information, so, so in case we do lose the letter, which is more likely, because it'll go in the piles, or it would in my house, I would at least know that there's another way for me to get this information. Otherwise, the superintendent's office is gonna be called, like, every time some parent needs to have their kid picked up.
Good idea.
Okay, I think one will take, Mr. Wainwright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things, it is, heard something a few moments ago, that I think needs to be cleared up, that this is a situation where, you know, well, you know, woo-hoo, we got another half million dollars, we can spend someplace else. This is woo-hoo, we have a balanced budget. I mean, the whole idea of doing this is because if we don't do this, we don't have a balanced budget, we have, we have a theoretical deficit, because we need four hundred thousand dollars worth of savings, and we don't have a balanced budget, because of the money we didn't get from joint finance. This isn't dollars we're gonna spend someplace else on all communities. Okay, would it correct me if I, is that, I'm correct? Okay. Second point, Mr. Chairman, a little bit of advice, I guess, from the chair and the superintendent. If we begin to see misinformation appearing on social media, should we respond to that misinformation, or direct that misinformation to the superintendent, and let him take care of it, and we choose?
No, I think you need to bring it back to, I will notify Cameron, or notify the superintendent directly. If you notify Cameron, then I'll handle it with the superintendent, and we'll address it, and find out, it depends on, obviously, the social media source, but whether it's the paper, or it's a blog, whatever, we'll look to our, when we have that, when we have the chance. Okay, any other questions? Comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Sav. All right, let's move on to Subcommittee, School Committee, Chair of Reports and Initiatives, Wisconsin Budget Facilities, with Mrs. McBride.
No, I noticed something in the paper the other day, and it'll just be to demonstrate to people that we are saving money that you don't always see. We went out with East Bay Laboratory on janitorial and supplies. Yes, saw that in the paper, so by doing that, we're saving significant amounts of money by joining with other school districts. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot else to report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. McBride. I will cover down for Policy and Curriculum. Unfortunately, Mrs. Schofield was not able to make it tonight, but she did want me to pass along. The next meeting's gonna be on Monday, June sixth, it's gonna be at six P M. at Holliver School. Discussion points will be employee computer use policy, responsible use policy, one-to-one device initiatives, and more. So if you can make it down, that would be great. All right, for Personnel Contract Negotiation Subcommittee, Mrs. Sill is not here, the only thing that needs to be addressed is some that I'll address on Chairperson's Initiative. I'll pass it along now to Wellness Committee, which is Mrs. Wainwright.
Thank you, Mr. Gantow. Our last wellness meeting for the school year is Tuesday, June seventh, at four P M. in the conference center of the district headquarters. We will have another guest. This one, this guest is Kimberly Clark, who is the statewide coordinator with the Farm-to-School Program at Farm Fresh Rhode Island. And Farm-to-School Program, which is they, a program they oversee, they are trying to get the word out to the districts about how they support nutrition education in the schools, and so she is going to be coming and talking to us about that. The other thing I want to let everybody know is that in Warren, we have a wonderful company called Water Rower. And Water Rower has been very good to our schools, and giving them water rowing equipment. Well, they are going to have a Water Rower Learn to Row Day, which is going to be celebrated on the National U.S. Rowing Day. Did you know we had one?
We have a National Children's Day, too.
And that is June, I'm sorry, what?
We have a National Children's Day, too, in addition to Mother's Day and Father's Day, in case anyone forgot.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Thank you. We'll take note of that. So this is.
Every day is Children's Day.
No, there's a special one.
This wonderful rowing day is Saturday, June fourth, from eleven to three. So if you're interested in rowing, this is, this day is for you, and it's gonna be held there in Warren, and there'll be other organizations, Girls on the Run Rhode Island, East Bay Rowing, four twenty-six, and you also can grab lunch from the Z Food Truck. And also, if you go, you will have a chance to win one of the water rowers. Can't beat that. Now, on another note, in talking about celebration, and we'll put this under the mental part of one of the areas that we work on with, under the Wellness Committee, I do want to remind my colleagues that on Thursday, June second, we will have a National Honor Society induction ceremony, and we will be not only inducting our seniors, but our juniors as well, here at Mount Hope, and this is the first time that we will have done that. And if you go to this wonderful event, you will find out who among our seniors has been accepted to Dartmouth, to Cornell, to Brown, to Tufts, and to UPenn.
And Columbia.
And Columbia. And this student has decided that she, he, it, I shouldn't say the gender, because I didn't ask for the permission, but, um, that she is going to be going to UPenn.
No, I think she's going. Just happened, off the way this weekend, I'm sorry.
She was thinking of going to Columbia.
To be determined, it is to be determined which of these amazing schools.
But this is amazing, this is an amazing student, and I do encourage, again, my colleagues on the school committee, to, to come to the National Honor Society induction ceremony and meet this student, and we will find out to which Ivy League she will be going. This is so exciting, and I have to say, I have lived in Bristol for sixteen years, have taken great interest in our school district, I have never seen a student get in to this many Ivy Leagues. We all should take great pride, I know that her family does, her teachers should, and I'm expecting amazing things from this student. So hope to see you on June second, and that concludes my wellness report.
Thank you, thank you, Linda.
Did those donations go out? It was a.
Okay. All right, so we went on to Chairperson's Initiative, Superintendent Evaluation Tool and Timeline. Simply put, this, not intended to do discussion, but just to make sure that we hit on milestones. Your input is asked for by the third of June, so finish up what you have in your evaluation piece. What we'll do is we'll finalize the evaluation during our June workshop. And if you have any questions regarding the tool itself, since it's new to us, I would ask that you stop maybe by talking to someone on Personnel Contract Negotiation Subcommittee that's more familiar with it. Also, if you have any questions regarding the evaluation itself, I strongly encourage you to talk to Dr. Andrew, and just speak with him directly. Just so you all know, it's, the timeline is crunching, the June business meeting, we'll discuss superintendent's contract, he will be signed this third year, his three-year contract at that point. All right, I'm going to scratch the executive session, our last one, as far as legal advice, having spoken to our solicitor, he said there's really nothing new. So may I get a motion to adjourn?
So, yes.
And I've got a motion by Mrs. Wainwright, stated by Mrs. Saviano, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.